There he is.
Yep, we'll be live here in a second.
There she is.
Alright, it's live.
Invitations to the public tonight?
Somebody wanted to talk or something, might hear anything, might want to speak?
I have, and I was just curious.
I don't really.
I'm not aware of any either.
Mark is not aware, must not be anything.
We did get an email that I will share during council.
Okay. Who are we missing? The mayor? Are you there, mayor? Service director? Max, are you there? About five minutes, my watch here.
Yep. Cherry, do we know of anybody that's expected to be absent?
No, I have not heard from anyone.
Cherry and Cliff, we're not seeing your photos.
Was I purposely?
Yeah.
I don't want you to see me eating pizza.
Yeah, I'm off camera right now as well.
We could watch Michelle sipping coffee. Or.
It's tea.
Gotta miss it by that much.
It's tea, cruster is tea.
Sherry. Puppy.
Hello, thank you.
Hi Cherry, how are you?
Good, how are you guys?
I'm doing well. There's Max.
Hey guys.
Hi Max.
Long time no see.
Yeah, a little bit. Get back in.
Seen you drive by a couple times.
Yeah, I try to honk.
You usually don't.
Got your head buried in a buck.
Or a newspaper.
Or asleep, I see you asleep.
That's happened. Especially with all the time off.
Yeah, really.
How you see me now? Come here. Oh, there's Mr. Mayor.
How you doing Cliff?
Fine, how are you?
Oh, it's Monday and it's been one heck of a day.
Well, they come and go.
I know.
Somebody have food?
Not anymore.
Have dinner.
Kathy and I ate early.
That looked like a plate of food.
We have, uh, we're eating healthy, we have cow tails.
Haven't had those in a while.
And licorice.
And licorice.
That's a mic, right? Do good time.
We're missing Mike and Bob.
Chad, you at the beach?
No. Sitting in the boys' bedroom.
I thought that song was smoking in the boys' room.
Speaking of smoking, I've been over a month without a cigarette, so if I act a little weird, it's, or off, it's, you know, it's.
Good for you.
I'm gone on two months now.
Alright.
Good for you, proud of you.
How can we tell if you're acting weird?
Hey, if I'm not arguing with you Roger, I guess I'm acting weird.
Alright, well get ready.
I miss you too Roger.
He said next he's gonna start running with me and run a half marathon after he quit smoking, so.
I am.
There you go.
I've just been eating instead of smoking, so, one way, my arteries are slowly clogging, yeah.
Only about thirty more seconds, it's six o'clock. Why don't we go ahead and get started, Mike should be coming in here soon. No one's heard from him that he's not gonna be, so we're expecting to be here. Glad to have everybody back, hope you had a good break. And got a lot of things done, couldn't go too many places, but, uh, gonna have to sit on Zoom for too long, so glad to have everybody back. And hopefully everybody stayed healthy and safe. Mayor will open up with you.
Like you said, welcome back, it seems like forever ago that I saw your beautiful faces on the Zoom, on the Zoom screen. I've been on maybe a couple Zoom meetings since, uh, since we last saw you guys. A lot going on, tons going on, so I'm gonna keep it short and sweet and go down the list pretty quick for you. You know, I, I think a lot of things going on downtown, restaurants, stores, lawyers, things going on. I see the good and I also see the bad, I was on the roof of the Selby building, last week, and trying to figure that out, either roof replacement demolition. We have talked to a lot, a lot of people, so, just trying to get some, some decisions. It will be, the Selby building will be in the land bank, land bank has, we had our first official meeting, last week I believe, I don't know, all the days run together, so. The land bank is basically a corporation, it is myself, Jeff Quarter, Tiffany Swaggart from the port, the three county commissioners, commissioners, and Jeanette Doniker, the county treasurer. It's a great group of people and look forward to working with them. It just streamlines the process of dealing with blighted properties and things that we need to fix. And it basically takes the government bureaucracy of the bidding process. If someone wants to get rid of a property, they can basically just say, hey, I wanna give this to the land bank. So, it really speeds up and expedites processes with, with blighted property, with any property, so. Looking forward to working, working with those people, people tell me more, now more than ever, they've never seen this much collaboration with people working together. And I just like to tell them that I like to make people work, so when people surround me, we just, you know, sometimes I just make them work, so. Not saying that they weren't doing anything, but I, if the county, you know, I'm not afraid to help the county grow, and the county's not afraid city grow and work together, and that's what's been happening. And look forward to things, things to come. UTVs, we've signed thirty-two UTVs up to date, no issues, no complaints. I like to tell people, when you do things properly, it doesn't blow up in your face, so I think we made the right decision, so far so good. Don't want anyone to prove me wrong on that, but I think where we differ is, you can go through the proper channels and you can do things properly, and then things work out in a positive way. So I think personally, that's the way I look at it, I think we've done things right. The people who have came here, it's been great, I've actually got to do a couple inspections myself. I don't charge any extra, so it really has been a process, a learning process, but definitely we're generating money. And we know who's on the roads, and I tell all UTV owners who come here, if I see them, if you see someone doing something wrong on UTVs or not registered, contact the sheriff's department, contact us and let us know. And we will definitely work hard to fix it. Financially, as a city, I, I look at us weathering the pandemic. We're not down huge amounts in income tax, we're not down huge amounts in collections for water or sewer. We're pretty flat, we're up a little bit maybe in collections and water and sewer. Dave Kadr is on board as utilities director, and he's doing a marvelous job. We are definitely working on, if you don't pay your water bill, your water is going to get shut off. So, it's, to me, it's cause and effect, we will work with people who will work with us. If people hide and think we're not gonna shut their water off, well, we're going to shut their water off if you don't pay your bill. Tax review board, Cherry had sent out an email, I, I don't know Cherry, a month ago, about a tax review board. Something that was brought up, just never filmed in the past. My appointment is Max Crown, council has two appointments to this tax review board, which basically will never meet unless there is a tax review issue. I don't look for anything major, it would be something, if there were, that the tax board could approve or, or not. Really don't look for anything to come up, I don't know, I, I can't speak for the past, the way past, but this year, we haven't had any issues, so I don't really, it's basically an Ohio revised code issue and, and nothing more, it's a, I told someone earlier, I don't know what fancy word today, I need to come up with a fancy word of the day. It's basically just needs to be set up, so it's there. Would like to, and I'll just bring this up at, at this committee meeting, would like to rent space for the, our town, Coshawton Executive. Which probably will begin, I think they're interviewing the end of September, so maybe mid-October, end of October. Don't really know the timeframe, but I'd like to rent them office space for, nominal, nominal fee because they have received grant funding. And I would like to keep it as low as possible so that we can pay that executive. Very excited about that because it becomes a full-time position, so every day we have someone working on downtown, and downtown's important to me, so. I really look cost-wise, probably about a hundred and fifty dollars a month. They're gonna need one room in City Hall, that room is not being utilized now, so. It's not like we're out a whole bunch of money, and it would bring that downtown person basically, into our world here at City Hall also, so if they needed help, Quarter's got great building knowledge, Cherry's got permit knowledge, you know, we have the connections with the port, I mean, it would basically be bringing, someone into our office with expertise on going forward, and downtown's in the middle of town, so. Where's more important than town? Downtown.
Hey Mark.
Yes.
The rent amount, you're thinking around a hundred and fifty a month, that what you said? Alright. What, what space in City Hall are you thinking?
Actually, it will be, there's a, Tom Scott's office, the, actually Cherry's office is in, the entry to the building and, and the back where the old water office was.
Okay.
Cherry's back there, and then there's a completely separate room off of her office. So, right.
I think it's a great idea, that would, you know, make it easily accessible for you and for whoever their new director is. I think it'll improve relationship with that group, between the city and, and our town. And I wouldn't be opposed to even a lesser amount, I know people might not wanna hear that, but.
And, and that's where.
Yep, and if we can even make it easier on them, I would, I'd be in total approval of that.
No, and that's what, and I talked to Sherry, you know, we lease other spaces out in the building to the state nurse, auditors. And we just, to me, you know, a dollar's good for me, cuz I have that person here and they're moving forward. It was just a, a number, so we can decide on whatever number you guys wanna decide on. We just thought it would be fair since we charge every, everyone else in the building rent, that would be a fair. I, I'm up, I'm definitely for making it lower because this is a brand-new position, and it will definitely benefit the, the residents of our city.
I'm sorry, Sherry, go ahead.
Oh no, I was just gonna say, for this state health department, or Department of Health, we chart, we, four hundred dollars a month, is what they pay, now the state auditors, since they actually come in and audit us and we have to provide them a spot, we don't, obviously, we can't charge them rent for that, but we have allowed them in the past to come into the building, and if they're working on another local audit, and Heather needs a spot to hang out for the afternoon, she'll run upstairs, and we have never charged for that, it's just kind of a courtesy, and I always look at it, it's, kinda nice little resource to have them, you know, available, so I don't hesitate to run up and ask them of a question, so. I just wanted to clarify that, you know, we don't charge them.
I just see this opportunity as, you know, it's an extension basically of City Hall. If we can develop a good relationship and working relationship with our town, that's gonna benefit, obviously, the city, it's gonna benefit council. And again, I wouldn't be opposed to working out a, a better rate with them, even if it wasn't a dollar a year.
Yeah, mayor, I wouldn't, I, I would agree with Roger, I think we should, our, our town has done a tremendous job. They've come a long way, and I sure would be in favor of blowing it as low as possible, to allow them, you know, they're still working on, you know, a real limited budget, but when those folks do a lot of work, and, so I would be in favor of, you know, as low rate as possible.
And that, no, I, I'll get with Sherry, and, and that, really, we need a lot of them from that. It's ready to go when they're ready, when they hire the director, and it's ready to go when they're ready, so. We, I, I was just throwing that out there, just, and I love, you know, I, I completely agree with, giving that, that opportunity and, and growing that program, and I'm up for zero, you know, so. I, wherever, wherever we meet in the middle there, whatever we can do for, worth, Graham, and we made a lot of connections with Heritage Ohio, with different organizations that are going to benefit downtown, so. I think the, the more we give them now, the, the more we will get back in the future, so.
I think that would be amazing, I know we've got the, the grant through our town for, to pay that director for two years, so in that two years' time, we have to, develop that revenue source to continue, so any help will be fantastic.
Right.
Office speaking is a good movement, mayor, on that.
I, I think, I just think keeping them close to us as well, you know, with anything, and, and we have plenty of space, boardroom meeting space here, I definitely think that it will be a great working environment for them to be in, and, I'm excited that, you know, we're definitely, getting that full-time person, that that's what they're focused on, and it will be exciting to see what comes out of it. So, my final thing is, issues that have been reported to me on speeding, and I've talked about this before. So, from, I wrote this, it, it, it's not a good poem, but it was kinda like what I wrote, time, from Chestnut Street to Concord Place, the Fair Street, to North 12th Street, to South Lawn, to Walnut. People need to slow down. Actually, I watched people fly down my street, so I'm a big, causing a, kinda person, so basically, what, and, and I've had conversations with the sheriff's department, and they're in a transition period. But, we're not in a transition period with letting people drive however they want to in the city, shock. So, and I've talked to Bob Skelton on this issue before, and if I want the highway patrol to come into our city, to work traffic, I have all the authority in the world to contact them and bring them in and do what needs them. I'm not satisfied with people driving however people want to drive, so you will probably see, a little more OHP, presence within our community, pretty quick, so I definitely, I decided that, actually, that was about a, four-thirty decision today. I, I don't want people think, I, I don't want residents thinking that I'm just sitting in this office, not paying attention what they're telling me. When people email us that they want speed bumps placed on their street, enough's enough, so. It's one of those things, if, you know, if you want it done right, do it yourself, well, here it comes, so. Definitely look forward to, you know, seeing how that works out and, and go from there, I've just, I've, I've heard enough, and I've seen enough at my own house, and it's definitely time to try something new and, and exciting, and, you know, I just, it is what it is, so I recommend if you don't wanna ticket, slow down, take your time. Someone is watching, and also, Jeff Quarter, I know when he's out, he's been watching, we've targeted areas where, we just, we need to slow people down, they need stop at stop signs, like, you know, it's not bad enough, I, we have to tell people to mow their grass, now we have to like, tell them to slow down too, so I, you know, it, it just, to me, I always say this, if you don't want government intervention, don't warrant government intervention, so if you don't want anything, to happen to you adversely, don't do anything to make anything happen to you adversely, so please use caution. School was back in. Kids are out, my kids are out, they're crossing the streets, they're walking down the, the roads. I, duty, we all have a duty to make sure that our community's safe, and it's time to slow down.
Hey Mark, I did, I, yeah, I do have a couple comments about that issue. I had just a couple people within my ward talk about speeding, but another, since you brought up about schooling, kids being in school, because of COVID, the elementary is, is now, their dismissal routine is different. They are sending children who walk home from school out the Denman doors, so those, those students who walk home are being released on Denman Avenue, well, there is no crosswalk to cross Cambridge Road there, there's a stoplight, there's no crossing guard, and the school zone actually ends before that intersection. So, I'm just a little concerned about that too as well, so for people to kind of be considerate of that if children want crossing there.
And there's no crosswalk on Denman, like from?
If you're crossing from like Denman to Cambridge Road, there's no crosswalk there on either side, it just goes across Denman, and then across Kensington right there, that's it, there's no crosswalk to cross Cambridge, that intersection.
Okay. I will definitely, I can get with Kevin Shire and Public Works and have a cross, what we can put a crosswalk down, so. There also is a safe routes to school program that for some reason we've never utilized, which I know it takes a little bit of work to get in that program, and, and the schools have to jump through some hoops, and I have to jump through some hoops, and, I think it's a worthy program that we definitely need to look into. Just, it's one more thing on my list at, at some point, so definitely agree, and that's very dangerous, when people are coming off that hill on Cambridge Road, and you can't see, and then, you know, it's just slow down. Like, that's where I'm at, it's just slow down, like, they're all, you know, just kids are grown, or your kids are gone, or you never had kids, well, they're all our children, and we definitely need to just look out for them, and, and, you never know what a kid's gonna do either, you know, so definitely, just watch out and slow down, if not, someone's gonna watch out and slow you down.
Hey Mark Glenn.
Hi Glenn.
Thank you. Three, three small things, first off, shame on the school system for making that decision unilaterally and not letting everybody know. That, that was really a poor idea. Secondly, living here on Cambridge, yeah, we have people speed fifty, fifty-five miles an hour through here all the time. We also have people coming down through it twenty miles an hour, it's gonna be a very dangerous situation. I've never understood why people think it's okay to come down, down Cambridge Road at twenty miles an hour, cuz you're causing trouble. But, I'm, I'm very upset with the school for doing that, and thirdly, Jeff, if you're listening, I've been reading about something called speed tables. It, it's a temporary device you put in, it's better than a speed bump, it's longer, flatter, it slows people down without breaking car axles. Look into it and just see if that's something correct, or it could be very costly, I don't know.
Alright, I'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
I've got six twenty-one, anything else on that?
Um, I have one more thing too, did anybody get a petition from the residents of John and Fair Street, or was that just sent to me, I wasn't sure?
Yes, we, we got that here, and then you got that, I think, Jackie.
Okay, is that something that, that you guys are looking into, or did I need to address that, or the safety committee?
They, that was the petition where the residents wanted Fair Street closed off at the alley, correct?
Right, because they said they're under assault from careless and reckless motorists, they've been speeding and going the wrong way down the street. So, there's a copy of a petition here, of the people on John and Fair Street, asking if you could look into closing that, I guess.
I, I think with enforcement, I know we're gonna work on John Street a little, do some, do some full-depth repairs on John Street. I think a lot of people are using Fair Street as like, I don't wanna be on that road cuz it's really bumpy. So they're using Fair Street as a, as a, the cut across from that. Another thing, Wilson will be paved this year, so I'm worried that it's, you know, once Wilson is nice and smooth, they're gonna say, we're not gonna fly down Fair Street, we're not gonna fly down John Street, now we're gonna fly down Wilson. So, I really think with targeted enforcement, I think you're gonna see some change, I don't, it, it's hard to just close a street now, you know, I, if, if we train people like, hey, don't do that, I don't think we have to close streets down. I think if we, if we do some enforcement, Jeff, were you out on Fair Street in that area?
Yeah, I've set out there several times, and run radar and watch for cars going the wrong direction, problem being that they're coming from, Denman towards Kennelworth when they go in the wrong direction, while the ideal place for me to set and run radar is, right there by the fairgrounds, the old gate off Fair Street, cuz it's nice and wide there, so nobody's gonna go past me, go in the wrong direction. So, you know, I'm gonna have to figure out how to work it the other way and work from the other end as well.
Great. What's your view? Great. What's your view? Jackie, what's your view on it? Like, you think we should close the road off or do you think we should just get people?
I don't know. I haven't, you know, I haven't really, I've been down through there, but I haven't really observed it myself. So I'm not sure. I, so I was kind of wondering what. You know, what you guys thought, what, what's going on with that?
I mean, it, it sound to me, it, it sounds like it's an overall issue on a lot of streets right now.
Right.
Where people are not, are not driving too fast. So to say we're gonna close one street down. Because people are driving away or too fast. I don't know. I mean, I think that there's a lot of people. If we make that and, uh, you know, do that, then other people are like, well, I want my road or alley closed off. So. I don't know, maybe just speed is the issue and people not following that.
I think enforcement is the issue and I think.
Think so.
Right. And I want to see, you know, I, it's not a threat to me. It's just, we need to do something. Like if, if everyone from every neighborhood in Stockton is telling me it's going on. Then it's high time to do something about it. So if, if I can't get anything done and I've already talked about it. I'm the guy that only talks about things about one time and then I do something about it. So that's where. I, I believe, you know, using the other option and taking care of it will help. So if it doesn't. Go to Plan C.
Hey Mark Glenn. I'm beating a dead horse here, but. I, I know the mayor's office eventually has executive privilege. But, but get the Safety Committee of Council involved with something like this. We, we have committees for a reason, but let's give them the opportunity to, to earn their keep.
No, and I agree. And like with that Matt, with that Matt thing you just told Jeff, any option. I'm willing to look at and I want you guys to look at that and figure out the best way to do it. Uh, I think this time, I think it's completely out of control and I'm gonna do what needs done and in this instance.
Are you, are you looking to meet on?
I'm sorry, who asked me?
Safety Committee, are you guys gonna meet on that?
I, I don't, I'm not on that committee. I can't speak for them.
Both on Safety Committee, you need to meet on that? Uh, which is a good idea. Unfortunately, I believe is, is an excellent idea.
Right, I, you know, with Jeff being around and just my experience, uh. With, with being with Jeff, just the, the visibility. You know, being out and being seen. When they see the, the, the presence, it's just, it's presence. And when you see the presence. You, you know, ninety-five percent of the people are going to do right when they see that police presence. So. That's, it, it's not, it just will solve the issue, I believe.
Hey folks, we can do it a couple of ways. It's a six to seven. We can move right up until seven o'clock, right after that point. Or we can take a break. So, uh, let's see if, uh, if you have anything further on that, Mr. Mayor. Max, you have anything for it?
No, it's been a, a busy month since I last seen you guys, uh, this setting. Uh, we're up to about two hundred tons of patching material we put out over the summer by hand. Uh, we've done numerous, uh, storm sewers with our people. As the mayor said, Dave K Drive has been a great hire. Uh, he's doing a great job in utilities departments. I know he's been working with Bob a lot to go after these delinquent water bills. And so, uh, thank Council for supporting that. Uh, West Lake, the project update. Uh, we basically have the entire main line ran. We're. Still waiting on the railroad to give us the final clearance to do the boring under the railroad. Uh, that'll take place right there at, uh. Dollar General. As you go into West Lake yet. And, uh. Yeah, the line's done for that part. Uh, we're working on the auxiliary streets right now since the, uh. Army Corps funding come through. So, uh, they're making great time on it. So I think by, uh. By the time Christmas rolls around, we'll be pumping water up that way. As you know, we've had several large water breaks over the summer. Uh, one up on Chestnut Street Hill, right past the Sligo Apartments. Uh, and that was due to us doing some testing on the water line. Um, so it was good to find out that we had a problem there and give it repaired. And then we had the one downtown. I'm sure you all seen in the news, uh, right at, uh, Third and Main. Uh, we'll still have to do some work on that intersection and, uh, we'll be taking care of that in the future. Bring up the Gilbert properties, um. We bid out, so I'm sure you've seen in the paper. Uh, we've arrived at two one to bids, I believe it was, uh. Bo Carter for the two on Elm Street and, uh, the Cox for the one on South Lawn. So. Blitting them up, we actually saved, uh, a little over a thousand dollars. Uh, Jeff can maybe weigh in to tell us exactly what the timeline is or Bob.
Yeah, we, uh, we're going the twenty second. We have to go to court for a final eviction process and, uh. At that point in time, then we're planning on probably taking the two on Elm Street down. Sometime the first week or two of October and then we will get those finished up and cleared up. Uh, and then we'll deal with, uh, the South Lawn property very shortly thereafter. That I'm hoping by. The end of October that we've started at least on that third one and have it down very early in November.
Thanks, Jeff. And I guess the last thing real quick is the new HVAC system for City Hall. Is, uh, well underway, that project, uh, as you know, will, uh, include some, uh, a more efficient system. Better air makeup along with some ionization units. It'll make, uh, City Hall much safer. For our employees here and, uh, that's being funded through funds that we got from the, uh, COVID Relief Act. So. I'm sure I butchered that cherry, but. It's money we got from the government for COVID. So. Um, that object's well underway. So. That's all I have unless you guys have questions.
Max, we have a, a reading for an ordinance and I have forty-one dash twenty. Is that a three readings you're looking for?
Yes, please. Uh, uh, it was brought to our attention that, uh. Uh, we actually should have had that in place. So. Uh, that was our fault not doing that before we went out for bid on that. So we can get that. That'd be great.
Any questions from Council on that? That authorized them to, to sign the contract, the agreement?
And I have not signed contracts yet with, uh, those folks.
Yeah. Anybody have questions on it?
I have a couple of questions for Max.
All right.
Uh, Max, I know we talked, uh, earlier in the summer about street signs. Uh, one at the corner of Hickory and Main. And one at the east end of White Woman Street. Those are still in, in bad shape. You can't even read them.
They are and Kevin Shire's put in orders to get that, get those signs in.
Okay.
Signs can take up to six weeks before they're actually get delivered, unfortunately.
Um, White Woman Street, is, are there any plans, uh, in the future to consider paving it?
Yeah, this year, White Woman Street, uh, as you know, North White Woman will be paved from the intersection to the county line. Uh, we do have White Woman Street on our list for next year. Uh, one is with White Woman Street as far as through the village itself is. Uh, paving, it's not a deal. I mean. It's when you get into the curbing and the sidewalks, it becomes a major ordeal.
Right.
Uh, those sidewalks set so far above the roadway. The way they were put in back in the seventies that. To get any grant monies on that to make those ADA compliant. It's gonna be a phenomenal amount of money. So. We've got it on for paving next year, although the guys, if you've noticed, we've done a halfway decent job of patching that street up. It's. We have ones that are far worse in town that I get to, that's a high profile area with, uh. From an economic development standpoint, so we have it on the list for next year.
All right, um, one other thing, not enough this falls in your area or not, and it kind of counters. What we've been talking about, but I'm still getting a couple of people. Raising these speed limit on Cassingham Hollow from twenty-five to thirty-five. I think it was reduced probably. Seven years ago due to the, uh, Head Start building. At the corner of, uh, Cassingham Hollow and Otsego. Um, I've tried to research to see if there was an ordinance passed that. Reduced that speed limit and I had Cherry look and neither one of us could find anything. So I guess my question is, what do we need to do if we try to move it back to the original thirty-five mile an hour speed limit?
Maybe a Bob question, but I would be in total agreement that that needs to be a thirty-five mile an hour. Straight more, more a road than it is a street, in my opinion.
I am confident we pass an ordinance lowering that speed limit. Um, so we would simply need to pass another ordinance raising it, but it's a simple ordinance.
Uh, I, I haven't found one either. After Roger contacted me, I looked as well and I, I didn't. I can't find it, so.
This from like two thousand five forward on my computer and I cannot find it.
I was on city council when we passed it. I, I remember we did and.
I remember when it was changed.
Oh, when it was changed. Well, yeah, when it was changed. I remember that, but the other is what you're looking for.
Forty, Jackie?
Probably this rate.
What, what, what's the history of it, Jackie? Why was it downgraded to twenty-five? I mean, it's not a.
I think people, we had residents kind of the same thing coming and saying that people were speeding on it and they were just flying down through. That area and again, it, we had residents at the time that. Came to council and they wanted it lowered. So we looked to it and that's kind of the way we did it. We just lowered it down, but I, I do agree. It's. Painful to drive that slow on that road.
I guess it's, it's again, it's a matter of enforcement. If the speed limit's twenty-five, thirty-five, whatever, I get thirty-five mile an hour if it's enforced and.
I think people were going like fifty down that road, maybe. I, I don't quite remember, but there was some concern.
And I remember the school was an issue.
Enforcement. It's an enforcement issue.
I want to say that I don't think there was an ordinance. I think I remember there being discussion with the sheriff. With Sheriff Tim and based off of his recommendation, he said, you know, it would be a good idea to lower it. So. I don't know why, maybe if you wouldn't go back to the sheriff's office again. And have them assess the area again and see if it's willing to go up. But I think that's how it happened. It was, you know. The sheriff had agreed. I think I see Cherry nodding in agreement with me, but I think that's how it happened.
Well, it might be that I gave the opinion that it didn't need council action in order to set the speed limit. So I'll just need to research that again.
I, I would suggest while we're looking at that area is, you know, where the city limit sign is at Head Start. I think we need a thirty-five mile an hour sign there because people drive fifty-five, sixty mile an hour. And I have had complaints from the folks that live like along the hill there. They can't even get out of their driveways with that curve there. They can't see people coming. So to me, that needs lowered to thirty-five mile an hour. A pass, you know, towards Jeff Drenland's there. So. This is my thoughts.
Safety Committee, want to look at that? Sign.
We, we can have a safety committee meeting, guys, anytime you want. I believe it's Chad, Roger and Michelle.
Yeah.
We want to have safety committee, look at that.
One more question from Max before we let him off the hook. Uh, what's going on with the, uh, light at Seventh and Otsego has been off for quite a while?
It's got a part burned up and Kevin's aware of it. He's working on it.
Thank you.
Anything further? Gary? Yes, ma'am. As for you. Jerry?
Um, I do have, um, if there's any questions on. For tonight, um, you know, just let me know. I, I hope I explained it all in the, um. Especially, um, with it being, um, the water, the one million, four hundred nineteen thousand, four hundred forty-four thousand. Um, there's just gonna be, um, revenue coming in and going right back out. Um, so we can pay the contractors. Some of that revenue has to come through here. Um, a lot of it is not coming directly through here. It's paying the contractors, um, directly. But this is, so. That's why I needed to get those appropriations. So if we can pass those tonight, because we're gonna be getting those, um, invoices pretty quickly on those. Um, then for next, um, next council meeting, keeping with, um, Jeff's comment and Max's comment on the demolition. Um, those came. Thousand five hundred. So if we could go ahead and appropriate, we had some appropriated for the year. Um, I believe it was thirty-five thousand dollars for property maintenance. Um, but we've been spending some of that for, um, quite a bit of it for trees and so forth. So. Um, we'll need to do additional appropriation for that. Also, Max touched on, um, you know, how many water breaks we've had this year and, um, the. Water distribution maintenance line item is, um, falling short. It's, they only have like fifteen hundred dollars left for the year. Um, so Dave K Drive messaged me and he would like to, um. He needs, he was, he's thinking maybe forty thousand dollars for the next year. Um, I have a transfer that I can do. He, I, I feel like we're gonna have plenty in one of his other line items. It's called the water power purchase. Um, so I told him, I just, just recommended to him, let's just transfer from that line item to his, um, distribution maintenance. So. Um, if, I'll have those on for the agenda on the twenty-eighth. And I had sent an email that I would have some different utilities. Just with the short week last week, I didn't get to them and then, um, I tried to get to him today. So. I'm gonna have some additional for, so utilities, um, like Columbia Gas A E P and so forth. So. I'll work on those rest of this week. I need to get with Michelle here in my office so we can get a good look at those and. Um, I'll probably have a few of those on there for next week too. It's not gonna be any high dollar amounts, maybe a thousand dollars a line or two thousand dollars a line. But I'll have those for you too.
Any question? Okay, no question. Bob?
Uh, just wrapping up the Gilbert, uh, discussion. Jeff and I have also talked and we've arranged for the Health Department to treat these houses for insects as well as. Um, mice, rats, whatever else may be in there. So we hopefully, when we tear down these houses, it's not gonna be a big hardship on the neighbors. Uh, with everything scurrying out of those houses. So we're, we're doing an all encompassing. Uh, attack on these properties.
Anything further?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I, I want to thank Jeff for being the, the anything we need done kind of guy. Okay. That's it. That's all I have to say. Thanks, Jeff. Get rid of the rats.
Any rebuttal on that, Jeff? I gotta give, can't say something.
Yeah, well, yes, uh, we've been planning how we're gonna attack that. I have a tank ordered. And we're just gonna drive it through the house, I think.
I, I have a rebuttal. Where was Quarter at when I was putting them eviction notices up there today with Bobby Skelton?
Welcome to my world, Max.
Anything further? I've got, uh, we've got time.
I have one quick thing. The Safety Committee is going to meet. It does need to be announced. Um. Chad is the chairman for Safety Services Committee. So if you figure out a date and time, I would be glad. To put it out to the media for you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Cliff?
Yeah.
This is Max. I do have one thing. I, I would like to have a meeting. At some point, either this month or early next month of the Infrastructure Committee, please. I think Glenn's the chairman of that. Discuss, uh, storm sewers.
Claire?
Great. I'll get together with you and schedule that.
Thank you.
My offer stands for you.
Yep.
I do have a quick question, question about meeting in person. So is the reason we can't meet in person because of the. Community or because of our group is too large?
I was gonna bring that up, uh, right at the end here. Max and I, we met in council chambers and. Take measure and in accordance with the rule that was given to us, the distance, we just couldn't. Fit everybody in there, even sitting on the front row. Uh, we had to build a platform to where King's Chair would sit up there and. It did be, it'd be too much stuff. For us to rearrange the town, council chambers. So hopefully things will start to change. But we did make the effort. To all different angles. Remember there has to be space even in front and back as well as the size. And we tried to figure that out. It was just not, the room's not big enough to meet those conditions. So when I talked about maybe another location, we hadn't looked at that. Uh, but we can, if you want to entertain that idea of looking at another location. Just keep in mind the recording situation, uh, being able to record the minutes and we have the best system right now that I think we've ever had. Uh, to do that, it's easier on the clerk.
And, uh, I'd like somebody to speak to the little theater. The recording system over there is tremendous. Huge stage, huge auditorium. We could at least consider it. They, they probably charge us a minimal, minimal amount, but we could invite the public.
Okay, something we'll, we'll look at, infrastructure maybe?
Frontier Power has a large meeting room also.
They're not letting it lie in it, Roger.
All right.
Sorry.
You can check with the, uh, high school and meet in the auditorium there.
Uh, they're not letting the churches in there for their Sunday meetings, not if they're letting any outsiders in.
It looks like we're stuck with Zoom watching this probably.
Cliff, I have one other thing. I have, I've talked to Max, I've talked to Jeff, uh, and I've talked to, to the mayor about it. And I still think it's something that we need to talk about, and that's the contractor registration. I see a lot of new businesses in town and I, I don't know if it's just because of COVID that maybe people are out of work and they're trying to create their own businesses, which I think is great. Uh, they also need to make sure that they are registering with the city. And I, I have read the ordinance. And I do not see any timeline or as far as they have to be in town for so long. Um, you know, the only exemptions I see or exceptions are homeowners, government agencies, public utilities, nonprofit organizations and minors. And it basically says anyone doing work in town needs to provide, needs to register, needs to provide a workman's comp certificate. And needs to have proof of, uh, three hundred thousand dollars in liability insurance. And I just think if it's on the books, uh, we need to enforce it, just like Mark was saying about the, uh, speed limit. You know, we, we can have all the laws and ordinances we want, but if we're not going to enforce it, we might as well rescind it because it's not fair to the businesses who are doing what they're supposed to be doing and registering with the city.
Well, if I could, when I spoke to Jackie about that, Roger, she said that there was a new state bill, I can't remember if she said it was a House bill or a Senate bill, that had went into effect. And it's, it was the one that, as I told you, outlined, they have to work twenty-one consecutive days. So the way she explained it, if they work twenty days in Kishaktan, go somewhere else and work for a day and then come back, that twenty day starts over. It's not accumulative. It's each day. And so that's what I was going on was, that was Jackie's explanation.
Well, I, I guess I would suggest then it, maybe Bob researched that. And if that is the case, uh, we either need to add that to our, our ordinance and amend it, or we just need to rescind it because it's still, you know, the, the people that have their businesses in town and do what they're supposed to be doing. Um, I just don't think it's, it's right that they're having to register and show proof of workman's comp and liability insurance. And I can come from Hoboken and work twenty days and go out of town for two days and come back. So, uh, maybe Bob could research that for us and see if that is the case. And if it is, then it's probably something we need to discuss.
All right.
Well, and.
With that committee, you want to work on that? Did Bob get that?
Sure.
Okay.
Hey, guys, I just got a, uh, email from Ken Smales. Uh, council approved on a four to two vote on March fourteenth, two thousand eleven to reduce the limit to twenty-five mile per hour on Castingham Hollow. The issue was presented by Tom Edwards after receiving several complaints for beating the fact that Head Start was there also was considered. So there you have the date.
What is that?
Date?
What's that, Cherry?
What was the date?
Uh, March fourteenth, two thousand eleven. Our email system finally worked. Yay.
All right, uh, thank you for that. Anything from the finance committee? The ordinance, go ahead, finance, nothing? Orders committee? Infrastructure committee?
We'll get together and announce a meeting date as soon as possible.
Okay. Grants and economic development? Nothing? Housing and property maintenance? Safety committee? Parks and recreation? Insurance committee? Health committee? If we don't have anything, the time I have is six forty-nine. We'll go ahead and, uh, meeting to the end and we'll have our regular meeting at seven o'clock. We'll leave back here on Zoom. We're done. Thank you.
Thanks.
See you soon.
See you soon. Michelle?
Yeah.
Would you lead us in the pledge this evening?
I certainly will.
Thank you. Max, we can look at your flag, uh, for the pledge. We have one minute.
The mayor will be here in just a second.
Okay. At seven PM? I see a chair. All right, I have seven oh one PM. Today's date is September the fourteenth, two thousand twenty. Welcome back from, uh, summer break. And we hope you had a chance to relax and, uh, get your thoughts together. Glad to have everybody back and to see you again. I'm going to ask the clerk, please give a call roll, roll call.
Rose?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Salmons?
Here.
Andrews?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Miss Schler?
Think you're muted, Glenn.
Glenn, you get it?
Hi, here.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman, Michelle will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Turner? You all please stand and remain standing for the invocation afterwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Imocation will be by Mr. Gross.
Father God, we thank Father, we thank you for this opportunity, Lord, to, to, uh, represent the people of Kishaktan, guide and direct us in everything we do and say. I pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. Councilor should have received minutes from the last two meetings. We had two meetings in July. Minutes from July thirteenth and July twenty-seven, two thousand twenty. Had a chance to look at those minutes. I'll entertain the motion to accept.
So moved.
I'll second it.
More, second by Ms. Salmons. Anything further? Clerk call the room.
Gross?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Salmons?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Turner?
I was not here, so I will pass on voting.
Miss Schler?
Yes.
All right, so they're accepted by majority. Is there any public input? Anybody watching out there that has any public input? We have means to do that through our email? Or texting, is that right?
We did receive one email earlier today. Do you want to read the full email or just summarize?
How long is it, clerk? More than three minutes?
No.
Well, we usually give people at least three minutes to speak, so great, read the email.
Okay, it's from Amanda Porman, her address is on County Road two seventy-one, and the subject is Wi-Fi access. I am a professional citizen of Koshakton County. I have lived here my entire life, raised my family here, provided health care to underserved in our community. At the maternal clinic and at the health department. And am a certified nurse midwife in a busy practice in Mount Vernon. I'm writing to inquire. Regarding what can be done, re the lack of internet access around our county. I live two minutes outside city limits and have no access to Wi-Fi. This is horribly impactful to my practice as I cannot even look at patient labs and EMR information from home. I have three college students that have struggled immensely during COVID as they have no Wi-Fi access for the remote learning. And have had to sit outside the public library or McDonald's to complete online testing or classwork. These are kids that would be wonderful to return to our community, it's tough to sell when even the basics. Or everyday business is not available. I too am ready after a lifetime here, good neighbors and great community involvement to move. We lost our OB unit at our local hospital, so I drive an hour every day to care for patients. And although I'm on a third generation family property, I'm considering moving away from home. Because due to lack of basic resources. I cannot complete tasks that are needed for my work in my own home. We used to be able to get by bare minimum using our Verizon data, however, we are now very limited signal street. With that, despite buying a booster, et cetera. I live on County Road two seventy-one, two miles further down our road, big business ethanol plant was given Wi-Fi access. Still further down the road, there are some residents close enough to Conesville to access their hub. I know we have very remote locations that are now getting the fiber optic phone access, but there are so many of us that are forgotten. We have an entire neighborhood forgotten, as does my mother on Township Road one fifty-six, ten minutes away. Besides selling a family property and moving closer to my practice in Mount Vernon, what can we do to receive Wi-Fi? Frustrated citizen hoping for answers and solutions.
Any questions on that email?
Yeah, actually Cherry, I will, I'm kinda been in the background of that today. This is not the first email, and this resident is not in the, in the. The city of Koshakton, which doesn't matter to me because I get these, actually, I just received one. A couple weeks ago from another resident on five forty-one, and basically forwarded off to the county commissioners. Our, if you would like, I can read a response to that email today that Tiffany swaggered, because we are working diligently. On, on a better network, a better system, and better access to people, not only in our city, but people in our, in our county as well. So, I mean, does anyone?
Yes, I think we should get that on the record, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I actually talked to Tiffany and said, hey, I got an email, I want you to look at it. Because I think we should start gathering these as testimonials that we can send that show the need for this here. So Tiffany responded to her email with, I wanted to reach out and let you know that Mayor Mills forwarded your email to me. I understand that this is such a frustrating issue. In the world today, internet service should be considered a basic utility. I agree with, I agree wholeheartedly that this has to be a priority item for our community. Please know that this is absolutely a priority as we feel it as a barrier to attracting business and retaining and attracting people to our community, especially our youth. Please know that we have connected with multiple providers in the last years about this exact issue. Their cost to expand and to the areas less populated, and with greater challenges and topography hinders their return on investment. There's a significant push from the federal, state, regional, and local level to help smaller providers with subsidies. That will help with the infrastructure costs. In the last years, while this topic has been heavily discussed. We realize that there are considerable flaws with how providers report their service areas. In an effort to gain a greater market, even if one house in the entire census block has provider service. They will show the entire census block as being connected. As residents of a rural community, we know how incredible, incredibly inaccurate this is. Very long story short, this issue had to get back to the FCC level in an effort to change the way it is reported. We are making progress in this area. Omega is a local development district that assists us with large projects, grant writing, and legislative representation. They have a consultant that is going to be assisting our area and surrounding communities with an accurate connection map. Leveraging this information for financial support and enticing providers to our area. Your email is incredibly helpful as we tell the story of Koshakton. If you are okay with me sharing this with Omega. As part of the testimonials that help us in this mission, I would really appreciate it. As this project continues, I may also need the individuals to help provide and personal testimonies. Would you mind if I keep in touch with you, I will keep you notified of our progress, we certainly value your family and Koshakton. Sincerely Tiffany Swagger. So, I think, I think it comes down to the squeaky wheel gets the oil, so I think if people, you know, say. Hey, we want this, we wanna be here, but we can't be here because we don't have this, I mean. I think that's, you know, reaching out to our state and our federal leaders is something that we need to do, and we definitely. You know, that emails from the day I reached out to Tiffany, boom, that's responded to, that's the way we work, and, and you know, that's. It just shows you, like, I love when people say nothing's going on, or we're trying. It's just getting the attention of the people we need to get the attention from to get something done.
I would agree. Grants and economic development, Mr. Gross, you're a chair of that, is that something your committee can look at? And work with Tiffany on that?
I can contact Tiffany and go over it with her and, and have her forward me the emails and take a look at it.
Okay.
You.
Happy guy, appreciate it, thank you. Anything further on that? All right. Any other public input? All right, we'll move right along then. We have a standing committee report, are there any? The mayor's report.
Just little overview of what I went over in, in committee. Just, you know, proud to, proud to be shocked and proud of what is going on. You know, special thanks to the, the city and county health departments. We're back to school now, just want everyone to slow down and watch out for children. They're all our children, so please. Be careful. When you're out driving around and look for some, some other types of cruisers in our area soon. Definitely, we're listening to what the residents are saying, and we're very receptive, so we're basically here for the people. Really, and we're in a great position, I think, with what, what's happened, you know, nationwide with, and worldwide with the pandemic. We're holding, holding steady and stable in our collections as, as income tax and utilities of, you know, not. Not forward, and definitely, you know, we're in a. A position where. We're just going to need to keep chugging along and building with what's going on. Definitely excited about the executive director's position for our town. Focusing on downtown and. Lot going on, and really proud to say we're here, and the real estate thing is moving, so I could go on and on and on. And yes, there are negatives, and we definitely work on those too, so I definitely. Just am proud to be here and proud of the job everyone's doing, and love my team and love my community, and definitely if people want something done, reach out. We'll be glad to listen, I'm not gonna promise that we're gonna fix something, but we'll share a lesson.
All right, anything for the mayor, any question? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Safety and Service Director.
Just a couple things in addition to our reporting committee. Mr. President is, as we discussed, ordinance forty-one twenty. Giving me the ability to sign the demo contracts on the three properties that we've been dealing with. I'd like to see if we can get that passed tonight in three readings. And then, one we didn't mention, forty-five twenty is for the. Five-year service agreement for the corn main water meters on the West Lafayette project. Sure, council members were putting in all wireless. Read meters at West Lafayette, they'll transfer right back to our utility office. And I just need the authorization to sign that contract with, for the upkeep of those, the. Technology for those meters.
Okay, any questions from the service director? Thank you. Law directors report.
I have nothing tonight unless there's questions.
Any questions for the law director? Okay, move right along. Is there a sheriff's report, do we make one tonight? All right. The auditor's report.
Good evening, I emailed you your packet information over. From your summer recess, so you have quite a bit, you have the July thirty-first cash statement, statement of cash, and the bank report. Then annals for July ninth. The detailed check report for July ninth, detailed check report for July twenty-second. There were no then annals for the twenty-second. Your cash statement ended August thirty-first, along with the bank reports for that. Detailed check report August sixth, and then annals for the same date. And then detailed check report, and then annals for August twentieth. If you have any questions on any specific one, just let me know, and I can turn to that page, if not, they just need to be approved in the minutes.
Did the JED reports need to be reflected in the minutes?
Um, no, those are just copies for council.
Thank you.
I mean, you could note that she gave them to them, but they don't have to be approved.
All right, we have the audit report for approval, is there any question? Do I have a, a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Move my Mr. Johnson to accept, report, is there a second?
I'll second, Kaylee.
Andrew's second, anything further? Clerk call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Audit report is accepted, thank you. Property code investigator's report.
Email my reports, you should have that, just one addition to that, the Clean Ohio Grants has started back up again. I've been working with Quicksaw and Associates, we are attempting to purchase five properties. At the corner of Locust and Fifth Street, which if successful, we would only have to pay twenty-five percent of the cost of. Purchase and demolition, and that would give us a, it would clean that corner up and make a very nice green space, it would have to say. Stay as a passive green space forever, but I think for the apartments that are just down the street there at Pear Tree North. And the residents around there make a nice place, we can maybe put a couple trees in and put some fences in, so. We're working through that, that right now. And we have a, the first Zoom call on that is the twenty-second that I'll be participating in, so. Moving forward, this is something we had tried to do last year, and the grant got shut down, but they've resurrected it, so I'll keep you advised on that. And I'll be glad to answer any of the questions.
Any questions for the code inspector? Thank you for that report. We're gonna move now into introduction of ordinances. If there's nothing further there, resolution. We have a first reading. First reading ordinance forty-one dash twenty, I'll ask the clerk to read forty-one dash twenty.
An ordinance authorizing the service director to prepare specifications, advertise, and let a bid for demolition. Demolition of properties located at seven-ten Elm Street, seven-forty-two Elm Street. And six-ten South Lawn Avenue located in the city of Koshakton.
Heard the first reading of forty-one dash twenty, questions and discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules and give it a second reading.
Let Ms. Salmons give a second, is there a second motion?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Johnson. Anything further? Clerk, give a second reading to forty-one dash twenty.
Should I call the roll first?
I'm sorry, call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Clerk, do a second reading to forty-one dash twenty.
An ordinance authorizing the service director to prepare specifications, advertise, and let a bid for demolition of properties located at seven-ten Elm Street. Seven-forty-two Elm Street and six-ten South Lawn Avenue located in the city of Koshakton.
You heard the second reading of forty-one dash twenty, are there any questions or discussion?
Missler moves to suspend the rules and give it another reading.
Move to suspend, is there a second?
Moore sec.
Mr. Moore second, anything further? Clerk call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Ask the clerk to give a third reading to forty-one dash twenty.
An ordinance authorizing the service director to prepare specifications, advertise, and let a bid for demolition of properties located at. Seven-ten Elm Street, seven-forty-two Elm Street, and six-ten South Lawn Avenue located in the city of Koshakton.
You have heard the third reading of forty-one dash twenty. Is there any discussion? Ain't none, the question is, should you pass this ordinance? Clerk, would you call the room?
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Forty-one dash twenty is adopted, thank you. Moving to a first reading of forty-two dash twenty, I'll ask the clerk to read first reading, forty-two dash twenty.
An ordinance approving the addition and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of the city of Koshakton by the Walter Drain Company.
This ordinance will take its course, is that correct? Ask the clerk to read first reading forty-three dash twenty, forty-three dash twenty.
Appropriations.
First reading of forty-three dash twenty, are there any questions or discussion?
Make a motion to suspend the rules and give it a second reading.
Move to suspend by Mr. Johnson, is there a second?
A second. Gross.
Gross, second. Anything further? Clerk call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
But ask the clerk to give a second reading to forty-three dash twenty.
Appropriations.
Second reading, are there any questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules and. Give the ordinance a third reading.
And move to give the third reading, is there a second? Which one are you? All right, Michelle. Ms. Turner gets a second. Clerk call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons. Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Mishler.
Yes.
That was the second reading, correct? Am I correct?
Yeah.
All right, ask the clerk to read forty-three dash twenty, third reading.
Appropriations.
Heard the third reading of forty-three dash twenty, are there any questions or discussion?
Make a motion to suspend the rules and give it, oh, yeah, third reading, we already did, didn't we?
Uh, we just need row call now.
Yes. Hold on.
It's been a while, people.
No, I'm telling you.
We'll get it back to you. Anything further? Um, actually you pass this ordinance, clerk, call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Mishler.
Yes.
Forty-three dash twenty is adopted, thank you. First reading forty-four dash twenty, I asked the clerk to read forty-four dash twenty, first reading.
Transfers.
For the first reading, are there any questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules and give it a second reading.
Move to suspend, is there a second?
More seconds.
It's more seconds, anything further? Clerk, call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Mr. Moore, yes?
I think he's frozen.
Mr. Moore, can you hear? Are you there, Mr. Moore? We have a glitch. You got moving. Are you there, Mr. Moore?
I am now, I lost connection there for a second.
All right, your vote.
Uh, yes.
All righty.
Turner.
Yes.
Mishler.
Yes.
All right, that's the clerk to give the second reading. Is that correct? You lost me on that one, second reading?
Yes. Transfer.
Forty-four dash twenty. You've heard the second reading of forty-four dash twenty, any questions or discussion?
This is Michelle, I'll motion, we suspend the rules and give it a third reading.
Move to suspend.
Mishler seconds.
Mr. Mishler's second to suspend, anything further? Clerk, call the room, please.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Mishler.
Yes.
Yeah, give the third reading forty-four twenty.
Transfers.
Heard the reading forty-four twenty, are there any questions or discussion? Being on the question issue, you pass this order, clerk, call the room.
Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Mishler.
Yes.
Forty-four dash twenty is passed, adopted. First reading forty-five dash twenty, that's the clerk to read forty-five dash twenty.
An ordinance authorizing the service director to sign all documents necessary to enter into a service agreement with Corin main on the wireless water meters for the West Lafayette Water Project.
You've heard the first reading of forty-five dash twenty, are there any questions?
Mishler moves to suspend and give it another reading.
Move to suspend by Mr. Mishler, is there a second?
Johnson's second.
Johnson's second.
All right.
And, and further? Clerk, call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Mishler.
Yes.
Ask the clerk to give a second reading to five dash twenty.
An ordinance authorizing the service director to sign all documents necessary to enter into a service agreement with Corin main on the wireless water meters for the West Lafayette Water Project.
Heard the second reading of forty-five dash twenty, are there any questions or discussion?
I'll move with suspend the rules and give forty-five twenty a third reading.
Move to suspend by Mr. Moore, is there a second?
Andrew's second.
Andrew's second, anything further? Clerk, call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Mishler.
Yes.
Ask the clerk to give a third reading to forty-five dash twenty.
An ordinance authorizing the service director to sign all documents necessary to enter into a service agreement with Corin main on the wireless water meters for the West Lafayette Water Project.
You have heard the third reading of forty-five dash twenty, are there questions or discussion? Being on the question issue, you pass this ordinance, clerk, would you call the room?
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Mishler.
Yes.
Forty-five dash twenty is adopted. I asked you, no second reading, third reading, that's the clerk to please give a reading of resolution. Five dash twenty.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to county auditor.
You've heard the reading of resolution five dash twenty, clerk, please call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Mishler.
Yes.
Resolution five, when we have adopted.
My apologies to council, I did a new sheet yesterday while watching TV. And I closed my eyes and envisioned y'all up on this stage and I'm getting texts and I'm confusing people, I do apologize.
You're loud, I think you're human last time I checked.
Thank you.
I kind of like not going first.
We have all of you in there in your vote, that's, that's key. Absolutely. We have no, uh, other business, uh, is there any old business?
I, I have a question for the, uh, mayor or Max, the, uh, lot across from, um, the water treatment plant. Are we going to do anything with it? I thought we were going to put some gravel in there or blacktop it or?
Uh, to my belief, it has to be green space because it was bought, it was a greens grant. Uh, I was actually working on. Uh, kind of a gateway to the city, then COVID hit and then it's kind of just been sitting there, so. Uh, whatever ideas you have, I'll entertain them, but I like, uh, kind of a Koshakton on that fence and maybe. A community garden area, uh, something to fill that space. Whether it be welcome to Koshakton sign, I would like to move that sign maybe that's out further on one A into that lot. It has to be green, correct, Max?
Yeah, uh, we could actually use it as a park. Or a parking lot, the problem with a parking lot is, is the storm drainage there. Uh, we'll get into a lot of money if we try to develop that to pick up four parking spaces. That's why I go down to Waterworks Park, we like the telephone poles and actually. Gravel that so people have a place to park for that park. Uh, like Mark said, I, I, for the short term, we ought to just, you know, get to gra- we took some of the gravel out. I would put it in there as part of that rebuild project where the guys worked their equipment. Uh, we need to get topsoil and get seeded down here in the next several weeks, so it can get some, some cover on before winter.
Appreciate it, thank you.
So, something's happening, we just don't know how soon.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Yep. Hey, I want to mention, uh, if, last but not least, uh, Edwin Yoder, one of, one of my friends, please reach out. Uh, they're actually having a barbecue. He's award-winning barbecue chicken man, like trying to run me out of business, I guess, uh, they're doing a first responders. Uh, for sheriff's department, fire department, EMS, uh. Friday, this Friday, eleven-thirty AM to one-thirty PM at the Heimball Park, so if you know a first responder. Tell them to go eat some lunch, uh. Edwin is actually Hillcrest Home Improvement is, is company, uh, they have the church out on County Road. Near KOA, uh, Shop and Lumber is also sponsoring this, uh, event for the first responder, so if you know a first responder. Tell them to go out to the Heimball Park on Friday at eleven-thirty. And that's my PSA.
All right. You have your own business. Your business. Your new business. Communication from council? Yes, commu- communication from the clerk?
Yes, um, from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, we have an application for a liquor license from. Riverside Landing Enterprises, DBA Main Street Station, any objections?
Are there any objections?
No.
No.
No objection.
No.
Okay, um, President Biggers, I, can I real quickly go through the department reports so they can be reflected in the minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Law Director's July report emailed August the twelfth. Mayor's July, um, report emailed August the fourth, August report emailed September the first. Income tax emailed July on July the thirty-first and August on August the thirty-first. Property Code Investigator mailed out July and August combined, September the eighth, thank you.
Thank you for those reports, any further communication?
Uh, um, this is Chad, I'd like to tell Roger and Michelle, I'll reach out to you guys, uh, probably Wednesday. Um, and we'll try to set up a meeting, all right?
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
How was simultaneously? Who was it?
I'll second.
All right, who's first?
Chad.
Chad, all right, second Roger?
Yep.
Call the room, please.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Mishler.
And I like the order. Yes.
Because I made you copy, so we're stuck on this for a little while.
What's the next meeting?
The twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eight, six o'clock? Everybody?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
October twenty-eighth, six o'clock, we are adjourned, thank you very much.
Thanks, Clark.
Bye.
Bye-bye.